All right, gentlemen, let's go. Good evening and welcome to the December 8th meeting of the Murphysboro City School Board. We're glad to have those of you in the audience with us tonight and those that are watching us at home from television. At this time, I'm going to ask you to please stand as we honor our country. Amanda Moore will lead us in our pledge, followed by a moment of silence. We want to remember the family of Carl Buckner who passed away this week. Carl came back here and the first job he had was principal at Bradley School, Middle School, in 1971. Longtime educator.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
And now I want to stop. Thank you. All right, members of the board, you have seen, you have received a copy of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as printed?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Communications? Dr. Tammy Grissom, Tennessee School Board Association. Welcome. Glad to have you with us.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I placed at your seats a copy of the notebook. At your request, we reposted the vacancy. We had a total of 25 applicants. I have given all those applications to Lisa, so if you'd like to review all the applications, she has those. Two of the individuals got other jobs, so they were part of the original, one was part of the original 16 that we had, and then the additional applications, she did, one called me a few days ago and had gotten a job in Florida. So, but Lisa has all those applications. If you would, we're going to turn to the first tab. Your first candidate that we're recommending as one of the finalists is Mr. Trey Duke. He is currently your principal at Salem Elementary School and has been since 2019. He has a master's degree in educational leadership. He currently serves on the Tennessee Department of Education Innovations and Assessment as a core team member. He served as coordinator of federal programs in response to intervention in Rutherford County Schools from 2017 to 2019. He served as coordinator of instructional technology and RTI in Rutherford County Schools from 2013 to 2017. He served as principal at Smyrna Elementary School in Rutherford County from 2011 to 2013, and he also served as assistant principal at Smyrna Elementary School in Rutherford County from 2009 to 2011. Mr. Trey Duke. Behind tab two is our next finalist, Dr. Tammy Garrett. She currently serves as your principal at Mitchell Nelson School since 2019. She holds a doctorate degree in administration and supervision. She served as coordinator of teaching and learning for one year. She served at principal at Hobgood for seven years, served as teacher of Hobgood for three years, served as assistant superintendent of instruction and director of federal and special projects, and as a teacher in Franklin County Schools from 1996 to 2008. Dr. Tammy Garrett. Behind tab three is Dr. Christina Harris. She currently serves as supervisor of educator effectiveness with the Wilson County Schools and has been in that position since 2019. She has a doctorate degree in organizational leadership and professional practice. She has served as human resources supervisor of educator effectiveness in Wilson County from 2016 to 2019, served as principal at Rossview Middle School in Clarksville, Montgomery County from 2012 to 2016, served as principal at elementary school in Wisconsin from 2010 to 2012, served as an assistant elementary school principal intern in Wisconsin from 2008 to 2010, and served as a fifth and sixth grade teacher in Wisconsin from 2004 to 2008. Dr. Christina Harris. Behind tab four is Dr. Kimberly Osborne. She currently serves as your coordinator of data and assessments and has been since 2018. She holds a doctorate degree in assessment, learning, and school improvement. She has served as principal at Reeves Elementary School from 2016 to 2018, served on the Tennessee Department of Education Math Standards Review Committee from 2015 to 2016, served on the National Math Textbooks Review Ed Reports from 2014 to 2016, served as assistant principal at Hobgood Elementary from 2012 to 2016, served as Mid Cumberland Core Coach from 2012 to 2015, served as numeracy coach at Neely's Bend Middle School from 2011 to 2012, served as teacher at J.F. Kennedy Middle School from 2008 to 2011, and at Antioch Middle School from 2001 to 2008. She is also a graduate of the TSBA TOS Perspective Superintendent Academy, and she graduated from that academy in 2019. Dr. Kimberly Osborne. Our fifth finalist behind tab five is Dr. Christopher Treadway. He is currently principal at Poplar Grove Middle School and has been since 2016. He's a former middle school principal in Rutherford County from 2011 to 2016, former assistant middle school principal in Rutherford County from 2008 to 2011, and former seventh grade science teacher in Rutherford County from 2000 to 2008. Dr. Christopher Treadway. Mr. Chairman, those are the five finalists that our team is recommending.
Thank you, ma'am, very much. Any questions? Do we have a motion to approve this list of five finalists?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. No questions, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
And before I leave, inside of your notebooks, in the inside pocket, is a sample interview guide. These interview questions we have drafted that are directly tied to your criteria. You can use them if you want to, and if you don't, that's okay, but we have drafted those for your use during the interview process. If you will also turn to page 25 in your notebook, I'm not sure how you're going to proceed with your interviews, but we've done a sample schedule for the interviews. It's on page 25 if you choose to use it. I think it's a good process. It's a process that brings the candidate in for a full day to meet with various groups so they have an opportunity to ask questions, and then the actual interview with the school board is in the evening. So these meetings throughout the day are not requiring the school board to be with each candidate, but it is giving the community staff an opportunity to meet each candidate. We're asking that you not, when they meet with principals or teachers, it's an hour long. You give the, each candidate about 10 minutes to tell a little bit about themselves and then give people the opportunity to ask questions of them. And so it just gives everyone an opportunity to meet each of the candidates, and then, of course, your interviews with the school board at night are public, have to be conducted in the public, so everyone has an opportunity to see those. But that's a schedule we're recommending. Obviously, this board can choose whatever schedule works for you all, but I think that schedule has found to be very effective in other school boards. Also, Mr. Chairman, I know in your timeline on page three, you have set aside January 11th through January 15th as interview dates. I would ask if probably by tomorrow morning, if you could call the candidates and let them know that you've accepted them and get their interview scheduled, because I'm sure they'll be wanting to know that. And if you need any help or you can call me, I'll be glad to assist, but you have all their contact information and they should be, they're expecting a call from someone from the school board to schedule those interviews.
Do the five finalists know that they're finalists?
Yes.
All right, any other, any questions for Ms. Grissom?
No, I just wanted to say thank you, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Your patience and expertise have been invaluable to this board. Personally, I want to say thank you for all the hard work.
Thank you. You're welcome.
We do appreciate what you have done more than once for us.
Glad to assist, and if you need anything, you know where to find me.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, I assume that our interview dates we set for January, the week of January, the 11th, 11th through the 15th, I believe, that's correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
We need to start though the interviews, because it won't matter who, right now, on who, on what date, starting time of, does it list a starting time here?
It lists the time at 5:00 is what I saw.
5:00? Okay.
And those, that seems to be a good time to meet.
Okay. Is that suitable? It's going to be tough. Why don't we see, what's better for you, Roseanne?
Are we doing it central office or here or where? Central office?
I think central office.
Central office, yes.
Well, I hate to be the only one that make us go a little later or something.
No, 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 no. We realize that you have a job to do.
And it's five days in a row. It's not just one off.
I know. That's what, I hate to ask to leave early, five days in a row.
Yeah.
Even 5:30 would be, would be helpful.
5:30 is too early for you?
No, I can, I mean, I can.
Would you rather go 5:45 or 6:00?
No, because the later we get, the later we go, and that's not good for anybody, so I can, I can make it by 5:30.
Okay, all right.
I may come in on two wheels, but I'll make it.
As long as you don't get caught before you get there. Okay, we'll set the time, the starting time then at 5:30, is that all right, Mr. Ringstaff, as far as central office goes?
Yes, sir. Ms. Van Cleve will start calling tomorrow.
Okay, all right. And we'll set up one per day, and then we will go from there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or discussions pertaining to the interview process? We're all set then, am I correct?
Yes, sir.
Assuming, okay. Grissom, thank you again very much. Appreciate your help. All right, do we have other communications? Ms. Trell?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. I'll go through just our normal communications. Murphysboro City Schools Community Outreach would like to thank Amazon in partnership with Feed the Children for providing food and hygiene boxes to 300 of our Mitchell Nielsen families. I think we had some other families take advantage of that as well, but we appreciate their involvement with our city schools. Thank you to A.J. Nelson. He is a former MCS student for donating 1,000 face masks for students across the district, which was part of his Eagle Scout project. The North Boulevard Youth Group hosted a COVID-friendly holiday celebration for over 200 of our students and still has coats and toys for our students as needed. Excellence in Education is being moved to the spring and will be an outdoor event this year, so please mark your calendar for May 1st for that. We will be having it at Cannonsburg. Totally different look this year. Also, Mitchell Nielsen would like to thank the generous folks at Tasty Table for donating breakfast for the primary campus. And James Vanderblum, he is one of our MCS bus drivers, for donating hats and gloves to our Mitchell Nielsen leaders. The City Schools Foundation met today and actually voted on our grant process. We had 67 grants received this year totaling over $200,000. The foundation voted to fund 18 grants totaling $33,880. Those winners will be announced in the next week. The grants ranged this year from $105 to over $5,000. The grants being funded included Ozebots chickens, or hatchlings, I guess, lots of music and science as well. And I just want to remind you, in addition to this $33,000, the foundation has already donated $50,000 for Chromebooks for our students this year, and another $43,000, they've been the funding source for a lot of our backpacks from March until we began the school year again. So we appreciate the City Schools Foundation and all of our partners across the district. That is your communication.
Thank you, ma'am. Good report. Consent items, we have a motion to approve the consent items?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Goff. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you very much. All right, let's go. Action items? Policy 4.4000.
Ms. Taylor.
These amendments to policy 4.400 are in response to a new state board of education regulation that creates a process for local school boards to apply for waivers regarding textbooks and instructional materials. To take advantage of this, the board must vote to seek a waiver to use materials that aren't included on the list approved by the textbook commission. And so this is a TSBA recommended policy amendment to reflect that process regarding waivers of instructional materials.
Okay, Ms. Barton?
So in other words, we're saying that we could potentially choose something that's not on the recommended list?
Correct. And in order to do so, this is a new state board rule. It's an emergency rule that was adopted in August 2020. To try to select a book that was not approved on this textbook commission list, the board would have to decide in its judgment that the uniquely unusual needs of the school system require selecting a book that was not on the state-approved list.
Am I missing something? Has that been a problem? I mean, all the years I've worked, y'all helped me. I mean, I've never, we've never selected something or wanted to select something that was not on the list. I was just curious.
I don't know. That might be a question for Dr. Osborne or somebody in instruction. And this is a statewide rule, so it might not have been an issue in Murphysboro City, but maybe somewhere else across the state it had been an issue.
Okay, Ms. Settles?
I have a question that probably just, anyway, I didn't know that we own the school, the textbook. I thought it was the district. It does say that they're the property of the board. Line number 15, the textbooks and instructional materials are property of the board?
Yeah, that should be Murphysboro City Schools.
Okay.
So we can adjust that. Thank you for noting that.
I wanted to make sure. That's why I was a little hesitant, I thought, because I know whenever we get those, when we have, we have school board appreciation week, Lisa's always after me to get those books back. So, because I was going to use this as ammunition against her.
Well, I'm sorry. You'll have to find something else.
These are my books. They belong to.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and thank you. Ms. Taylor, wouldn't this empower the board to be able to acquire school books if there were an emergency shutdown of production across the state or across the country?
Yes, if they wanted, if the board wanted to select books that weren't on the approved list, I would imagine that would be feasible.
So in other words, it's not something that's required, it just simply empowers us to have different choices if that were to come to fruition in any light, correct?
Correct.
Very well.
Chairman?
I'm sorry, Ms. Goff, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to follow up with what Roseanne said. It concerns me that we are possibly going to approve something that the state has not already approved, that, that sounds like we can just.
You don't have to. This is giving the board the ability to, if it so chooses.
Yeah, I'm just kind of voicing some concern myself about.
And when we have a book adoption year, let's say science, we get a group of teachers to look at all the choices, selections, and they vote, and we go with whatever they vote on.
Okay, so that's what this, this.
I think this is allowing you to go against what the.
Go against, okay.
But the selection committee is a group of educators from our system, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, I had one other question, David, and then we'll get to you. There is a part of this, if I can find it, where it talks about returning materials and things like that, and that they're property of the board. What happens if a child does not return the textbooks? Is it still in process to hold back on report cards or whatever, or has that changed in the last 10 years?
That's still in the state board rule that if a, if a student doesn't return textbooks or any other materials that are school property, that's considered a debt owed to the school. Under the state board rule and state law, school districts can withhold grades of students who owe a debt to the school.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Settles?
They can, but they don't, we don't have to.
Correct. And I think, yeah, it's, we may, we don't have to.
Yeah, let's be nice. I guess to, to some of the concerns, it would, I could only see this coming into play if we had a radically different view from what the approved textbooks were. Is that, am I getting the, the logic behind this? Because I don't necessarily have a problem with it. I know that we're not constrained to do this, but if, if there were a situation that came up that, I'll just say, they were throwing out the history, a history book, then we just, we said, no, we don't agree with this as a city, you know, because they, they said everybody in Murphysboro back in 1865, you know, wore red suspenders, and we don't believe that. So we could get another set of books. Is that, is that the logic behind this?
So in the state board rule, it does give some examples of what unique or unusual needs may be that would prompt a school district to want to do this. The first one is that the LEA has demonstrated success with a specific title and publisher and wants to continue using those materials, but for some reason it wasn't approved at the adoption cycle, but the district still wants to continue to use that line of materials from that publisher, then that would be a unique circumstance where the district may want to apply for a waiver to continue using those same resources. Another one is if the LEA wants to use open education resources, and another one, this doesn't really apply to our district, but if the LEA wants to offer a state-approved course for which no textbooks and/or instructional materials exist.
Because I know that.
It's probably something to with higher education and dual enrollment and things like that, where textbooks might not be developed, especially when you get into high school and get into non-traditional type courses, that maybe they needed some additional materials that there were no textbooks for.
So this, 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 actually, I'm very comfortable with this, especially with that explanation, because I'm thinking more along the lines of some approved textbooks that have been done in other states, not here, but I think Texas and maybe in California, they approved some very controversial textbooks, but the local school board maybe didn't have the authority to say, we're not going to use it, and they had to. So this would, this would help us with that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Ms. Moore?
So those reasons you just gave made perfect sense to me. Of course, what David's talking about is a little more concerning, but I'm just looking, so it looks like there's a process. We would have to submit a request to the State Board of Ed to have a waiver from whatever the textbooks that were already approved are. And those, those conditions you just listed are from the State Board of Ed, so they would presumably be looking at those types of situations to either grant us permission to go off the approved list.
Exactly. Once the board makes a vote that they want to vary from the list of approved textbooks, the director or the director's designee would have to fill out the application that was developed by the State Board of Education and apply to have that waiver granted. So the board can't on its own decide that they're going to go away. It's, it's a multi-step process.
All right, do we have a motion then to approve policy 4.400?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Beller. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Next policy, 6.303.
These are a couple updates to our interrogation policy. One update is to clarify that only the principal is allowed to authorize the search of a student's locker, and in our prior policy, it said that students don't have any right of privacy in their locker, but an AG opinion says that students actually have a very low expectation of privacy in their school locker. So being the attorney, there's a difference between no and low, so I wanted to make sure that our policy accurately reflected what the law is. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and we recommend approving. Oh, one other, excuse me, one other change that I added was that our prior policy said that a administrator could hold on to contraband that was seized in a school, but again, there was another attorney general opinion that said that those contraband, which is drugs or dangerous weapons, need to be turned over immediately to law enforcement because it's against the law to have drugs or contraband in a school. So our policy said that we would turn it over after the completion of the administrative proceeding, and that was contrary to what the law is. So I updated that portion as well, and I would recommend approving this policy on first reading.
Question, I've got two or three questions. If you look under section number two, under interrogations, the last sentence, any student answering falsely or evasively or refusing to answer a question may be subject to disciplinary action, including suspension. Is that legal? You see, Ron?
That's, that's not by police. That's if a student is accused of doing something that violates the school policy and they're not answering, you know, the school principal about.
So if, if the child doesn't want to answer, what's, I may be going way off on a tangent here, but what's the difference in the adult saying, I think the Fifth Amendment?
They're not adults. I don't think they have.
Okay, but does it not, is that not the same for a minor?
The Fifth Amendment doesn't apply to a administrator questioning a student about a violation of a school policy or a school rule. I think if a student was, you know, accused or suspected of violating a school policy or a school rule and they don't respond, then, I mean, I think that there's a, I mean, I don't know how the principal would be able to investigate and make a decision. And again, if a student was suspended on that reason, again, we have procedures outlined if a student is suspended for a certain amount of time, the way they can appeal a suspension and, you know, challenge it. So, I mean, I think the difference here is this interrogations by school personnel isn't law enforcement. It's not a criminal offense. It's a school-related offense that they're being questioned about.
Okay, all right. You answered my question, okay. Another question I've got, line 18. The principal shall make reasonable efforts to notify the parents or guardians of legal custodians interrogation. Okay, the questioning may proceed without attendance of the parent, guardians, or legal custodians. custodians if permission has, to do so, has been given by the parent, guardian, or legal custodian of the student. So if the parent says, okay, you can talk to my child, okay, but if the parent says no, you can't, is that right?
Correct, and if, if you recall, the last time this board, this board policy was presented, there was robust discussion about police interrogations in the school setting. That line, the principals have no duty to notify parents, that's clear under the law. However, the last time this policy was discussed in this board, again, there was a lot of discussion and concern about students being interrogated for non-school-related things in the school building. So our policy, although it's not required by law, is that we ask for parent permission before students are interrogated regarding non-school-related crimes in the school building.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Goff?
In this policy, where it's talking about the law enforcement, are we including, is this, does this include our school resource officer as part of the investigation, the interrogation, I guess?
So I don't believe our school resource officers would interrogate. I believe they're, they're more in an educational role. Do they ever interrogate? I don't think they...
There's supposed to be a branch of the law enforcement, I would just, I just wondered if, if that would eliminate...
I think they have that right, yes.
So, yeah, it would include them.
It says so on line number five, the principal has requested assistance by law enforcement to investigate a crime involving the school, the police being interrogating a student suspect in school during school hours.
If I could interject, I could be wrong, but I think that for the most part, that would not be in the principal's best interest for the school resource officer to participate in the interrogation or to bring the SRO in, because that's not the role that we want them to play for us. So I'd be really surprised if somebody tried to get a SRO to interrogate.
I haven't seen that happen at all. I think the SROs are more on the education, prevention, security type side.
Community, spirit, feeling, you know.
They're not detectives to investigate crimes.
Now, if, if, if the chief police tells that SRO to investigate, then they're going to, but that's, that's...
A whole different...
That's their ballgame, not ours.
Exactly.
That's one reason why we encourage the principals to take care of school-related matters, leave the SRO officers out of those.
I agree. Okay, Ms. Saddle?
I want to revisit something that the chairman brought up, which is, any student answering falsely or evasively, refused to answer a question may be subject to disciplinary action, including suspension. And the question that I have is not, if the student is directly, if this, I'm not looking at the, the student being the direct perpetrator, but there's an incident in the cafeteria, you bring in Johnny, Johnny wasn't in the fight, but Johnny saw the fight, Johnny saw Billy start the fight, et cetera, et cetera, you're asking Johnny questions. So now the fear is, if Johnny doesn't answer, or if he's evasive, then he's subject to suspension, because he wouldn't rat out Billy. But my question or concern is, if he's afraid to say something because of retaliation, now we're going to suspend this kid, not that it has to happen, but that it could. So we're going to suspend Johnny because he wouldn't tell on Billy, because he's scared, because Billy lives in his neighborhood, and if he tells on him, and, you know, he's going to know, then there's going to be some trouble. So that gives me a little pause, and I'm not, I'm not, I know we cannot plan for every eventuality, but that gives me a little bit of pause, and I know things are a lot different than they were when I was in school, and if they've gotten a little bit worse, then, I know I was when I was in school, you know, even at, we go up to fifth grade or whatever. So I'm looking at this kind of, and I don't know if that's what this is supposed to address. So that's, that's my concern.
That's a fair point, and I think, to your point, I would suspect that that doesn't address witnesses, witnesses being interrogated, and that's probably maybe in second reading, we can clarify that line.
Yeah, I'd like to see something that...
As the proper intent.
That defines that more, more succinctly, because I, I really could just, you know, see this being an issue where you're called in to corroborate somebody else's story, and you don't want to. It could be your brother or sister, you know, and you just don't want to.
Yeah, and I mean, I, knowing our principals, I don't think that would be an issue.
Sure.
But again...
We know the principals we have now.
The policy, the policy should say what it means to mean what it says, so we can...
Going back to what I was talking about a minute ago.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You can violate school policy without violating the criminal code, correct?
Correct.
And that's really the spirit of what this is, is that right?
The interrogations by school personnel, yes.
But it's not limited in that scope in the language necessarily, right? It says interrogations broadly, even though it's within the paradigm of school policy rather than the criminal code.
Well, the interrogations by school personnel section says that schools may be questioned by teachers or principals about any matter pertaining to the operation of the school and enforcement of its rules.
So that excludes criminal?
Right, if it were a criminal, then we go into interrogations by law enforcement at the school's request. It could go into that.
And the city school board is absolute in its recognition of the Fifth Amendment for anyone accused of a crime or delinquent act, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Moore?
I was just going to add, the suspension piece only pertains to the interrogations by school personnel.
Correct.
Not crossing the line of police interrogation.
All right, any other questions on the policy? We have a motion to approve the policy.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Barton, we have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. All right, going back, let's see, what's next?
The next policy for review is policy 6.405. This is a TSBA-recommended amendment to incorporate the process for allowing students to self-administer asthma medication during school hours. Anyone has any questions?
Any questions?
Move that we adopted.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
These are all first readings, right?
Correct.
The next item on your agenda is, we would like for you to approve a security bond for our new finance director, Mr. Michael Smith.
I have a motion to approve the security bond.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore, second.
Second.
Ms. Goff, thank you, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item on your agenda, last board meeting, you graciously approved three asynchronous days, and I think I need to define asynchronous. We have asynchronous days and synchronous days. One has an A in front of it, and one does not have an A in front of it. The synchronous days is when a student is in front of a teacher who is teaching them right then, either in person or on Zoom, it's live.
And that's synchronous?
That's synchronous, without the A.
Okay, all right.
Now asynchronous is, in our situation, we prepare work for the student to do at a later date, or on their own, or they can do, view a recorded session on the internet, on the website, but that's not live, that's not going on at that time. So that's the difference between asynchronous and synchronous. It's happening right then, teacher-student engagement. Yes, sir.
So asynchronous is almost like self-guided?
Yes.
It's almost like self-guided teaching?
Yes, you're exactly right.
And my question was going to be, how this one, we have one on the 24th, is that right? Am I reading this right? November 24th, we had an asynchronous learning day, how was, what's the report from that? How did that go?
Yes.
Would, everything was positive? That's what I heard.
Yes.
So just want to be sure, want to put that out there. That very positive results on that, and you said something, I don't know if it was the last meeting or sometime, that the coronavirus has, has probably abolished snow days now for us forever.
I hope not.
No, 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 I know.
Yeah.
Y'all understand what I'm saying, in the sense that we could still, I know, I saw you, we didn't get to have a snow day yet, but in the sense that...
We probably won't.
Kids can still learn, because we have the ability now to do it, so if we go into a situation where we've had too many, or we've had a multiple of snow days, I'm still from the old school, and I remember in Nashville, when I was a kid, and we had so many snow days that school had to extend into June, because, nobody believes me, but it used to snow really bad in Nashville, y'all, well, we all, because we're older, but nobody now believes we had snow like that, and it would snow really bad, and we had, we were out for weeks, and it delayed the school year. So that type of situation, we would be prepared for better, is what I'm talking about. So I know we're still going to have snow days. Nobody panic or write to the mayor.
The reason that we don't worry so much about snow days today is because we're going 30 minutes a day above the minimum, so we actually have 13 built-in snow days.
Yes.
So you wouldn't have to, if you didn't use 13, then you don't have to extend the school year.
Long as we don't get a blizzard like we had that one year.
Well, I know it, they had a bad one in 63, I remember that one.
Well, I don't think we've had a blizzard in good lord, I don't know how long, so we'll be lucky to get one snow this year, much less 13, so.
Everybody liked their snow camp.
I'm sorry, I hate that, but I love snow, and I love for the kids to get it, but...
Well, back to the topic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You graciously approved three asynchronous days last board meeting, and November and December, the months of November and December have been worse than I had anticipated, our numbers. I was really worried about the months of January and February, and the way November and December have hit us, we got together and we thought that we could come up with two more asynchronous days, one for the month of January, one for the month of February, where it would be in the middle of the week on a Wednesday, which would give teachers, EAs a day to plan with no, with no students in the middle of the week. And also, I checked with nutrition, I checked with ESP, and both those groups stated that Wednesdays would be better for them for any additional asynchronous days. So that's why we chose January the 27th and February the 24th as additional asynchronous days to add to our calendar. As you would notice, we come back on January the 5th, students do, teachers come back January the 4th, so they have that day to plan. Really, students only go a full week, one week in January and one week in February, and we hope that will help alleviate some of our situations that we're currently experiencing.
Ms. Moore?
Could you say a little more about the reasoning behind the Wednesdays? Because I know as a parent, sometimes those were difficult, to have a day off in the middle of the week to coordinate childcare and getting kids out of routine, so can you say a little more about why that's good from the teacher perspective?
Well, I think a lot of school districts, if they go to a hybrid plan, they, they do Wednesdays as no-student day, and the first reason was so the custodians could do deep cleaning of those schools. They would have one group come in Monday and Tuesday, another group come in Thursday, Friday, and deep clean on Wednesday. But in our discussion, the reason we chose those Wednesdays was because it would give teachers and EAs a break in between, in the middle of the week to plan for the other two days, and also the following week, but it also allowed ESP and nutrition latitude to make it better for them as well. But we, and I hesitate to continue to give them three-day weekends, because normally when that happens, we see an increase in cases the following week.
Understood.
Ms. Saddle?
The asynchronous day on January the 4th says there's a day out for students.
Teachers do come back, and that was planned last February, March, when we were...
So is that still considered an asynchronous day?
No, sir.
Because kids aren't, not...
Aren't going to learn.
Okay, so that's not an asynchronous...
We're not going to give them any instruction.
I was wondering, I was like, how do they do that? They're really super. So January 4th is not an actual asynchronous day.
Correct.
Rather, the 27th will be.
We only have one asynchronous day in January if you approve tonight.
Sure.
And I think we have two...
And the same for February, because the 5th of February is listed as one?
Yes, two in February. You've already approved February the 5th.
Yes.
The last board meeting, I'm just asking if you approve.
We're going to add the 24th.
The 24th.
Ms. Barton?
I totally understand the reasoning behind the Wednesday, or the ones, how you spaced them out. I just don't want to get to the point where we overuse a good thing, because then it becomes more of a problem, which means it's going to be harder for us to continue doing it, you know, if we have a lot of complaints. So I think what you've done is adequate, is good. I mean, it's not that often, it's maybe once a month, so I think that's fine, but I just don't want to see us get into something where we're falling back on that all the time.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Moore?
Sort of along those lines, this calendar doesn't include next week, which is now proposed as, or has been announced to be an asynchronous week. Is there a reason it's not on this calendar?
The board packet was fixed, it was...
Before we did?
Yes, before we did it.
So I do have a question about that. I understand the desire to have kids not in the schools next week, the week before winter break, understood that. I would like you to talk a little bit more about the decision to make next week an asynchronous week as opposed to a distance learning week, so synchronous but remotely.
What our plan is, for, when we had the synchronous days, the Monday and Tuesday before Thanksgiving, our instruction department came up with choice, choice boards, where students got to choose the work that they did. This time, since it's five days, we're going to have their teachers supply work for them, send home on Friday to do all next week, to do all the five days, and we hope that that's enough work. Now, as a district, we can't go all remote, we don't have enough computers. We are two-to-one district, two, two students per one device. So as a district, we can go all virtual.
So we're still there. So I, I know we got a bunch of computers in, I think, this month?
Yes.
So at any point in the winter, say things do take a turn for the worse in January or February, will we have the machines then if we need to do this, to do a distance week or days?
District-wide, we're about 2,500 computers short, and also, and we have some schools who have bought computers using school money, and with that, plus, many of students will not need a Murfreesboro City School computer.
Right.
So we think we can do that. One aspect is, we have 3,000 students who do not have internet access.
Right.
So that, that's a problem, but I think if we do have to go to that, that we would still offer ESP, then they would be able to come into the school to use internet access for those who need childcare and/or who don't have internet access. So that, that is an option that we could use.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? Do we need to approve this? I guess we do, don't we?
Yes, sir, I would recommend approving.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the updated calendar for 2021?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
Next item is approval of critical infrastructure designation. The Department of Health and the Tennessee Department of Education got together and came up with these guidelines, and some school districts have designated all staff as critical infrastructure, essential workers. I have chosen not to do that at this time, but I, two groups, and we thought nurses were already considered critical infrastructure, I mean, they deal with positive cases either on a daily basis or a weekly basis, so we, we just wrongfully assumed that nurses were already considered critical infrastructure. So I would like to recommend that we designate nursing, nurses of each, in Murfreesboro City Schools as critical infrastructure, along with the nutrition staff. Both supervisors of both groups have... Both supervisors of both groups have gotten with those employees and told them what it's about, and all employees agree that they should be considered critical infrastructure. What does that mean? That means right now, if Ms. Taylor tests positive, and I've been within six feet of her for over 15 minutes, I automatically have to be quarantined as well. With critical infrastructure, if Ms. Taylor tests positive, I don't have to quarantine, I have to wear the mask, stay six feet away, all those safety guidelines unless I exhibit symptoms. If I exhibit symptoms, I have to go get tested and be quarantined. But until I exhibit symptoms, I can still continue to work. So we, we, and we have to submit the minutes of this board meeting that, with y'all, approval for nutrition and our nurses to be considered critical infrastructure, essential workers.
Ms. Moore?
And just to clarify, it's continued to work but with heightened social distancing procedures, so it's not just as normal.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, it's, it's got it in all these guidelines, yes.
Wouldn't that be a little hard for our nursing staff to do safety protocols if they've been exposed?
Yes, ma'am, it is hard.
But it's necessary.
But you have, you've talked with them and they are aware of, and they agreed that they want to do this, correct?
Yes, sir, nurse, the supervisors of each group, okay.
But I mean, it's, it's, it's exposing children to the possibility that they could be positive even though they don't have symptoms. I appreciate that they're willing to do it, it's just, do you understand what I'm saying? I know we need them, it's, it's just that they're going to be exposed to our children that. Go ahead.
Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and with, with what Ms. Goff just said, I believe that's why we've chosen just these two categories of individuals to be critical infrastructure because we don't want to maximize exposure to the virus and keeping it with those that we absolutely, essentially need. Is that the thought behind that?
Correct, and I do not plan to come before you with any other groups.
Very well.
Ms. Barton?
My only concern, and I understand what is being said about the nurses, but there are also several jobs that nurses can do. The contact tracing alone is taking hours, and so somebody that has been in direct contact could do that as opposed to one of the others. But, but the thing with the food service, and I understand why we need them, but I guess my, my thought is their exposure to the food, that they're preparing for students in the entire school, I mean, is that, you see what I'm saying?
Correct, and I think all, all those employees wear proper PPE gloves and things like that when they're preparing the food.
I mean, there's no right answer here, but.
Not only prepare the food, they have to deliver the food to the classrooms.
Mr. Suddles?
Thank you, I, I, I do understand the need for this, and I understand that there's a little hesitancy, but in my day job, we have the same thing because we're direct, directly care for people. And the issue is not that I myself have the virus, but that I've been exposed. Because heretofore, the policy would be if you've been exposed to somebody, you've been next to somebody that has the virus, then you had to quarantine and all of these things. Well, I may have no symptoms at all, which has been the case for me, and I've had several people in my immediate care area that have been, that have been positive. I've never had any symptoms, never shown any signs, temperature's always been good, so I didn't have to quarantine. But I did have to mask up, gown up, and all of those things to provide an extra layer of protection against anything that could possibly come from me or to me. So I understand that, and it is one of those things, unfortunately, that we have to look at when we're in this situation. So I understand it, and I appreciate the fact that we're limiting the number of people that are, that are in this situation. Because what we don't want is for nurses, I had a nurse, when they told her that she had to stay and work, she walked off, she quit, you know, I'm not doing this, I just can't, you know, but it's kind of the job that you sign up for. So I think the extra precaution, wearing your mask, wearing your PPE, your gloves, and all of those things are going to be critical, and I think they understand it, you know, to that extent.
And I hope that this makes those individuals more aware of what they need to do to stay safe.
Absolutely, yes.
We had, I think, three or four situations where our whole nutrition staff were wiped out at a school, at three or four schools.
Just by quarantine?
Yes.
Not positive?
Right, correct, well, yes, one positive and wiped out the rest. And this will keep everyone, we hope, safer and cognizant of what they need to do.
Mr. Ballard?
Thank you, I think it may have already been answered by Mr. Suddles' questions, but I want to be sure I understand that currently today, if we have a positive test among our cafeteria staff, then it's going to affect the other cafeteria workers in that orbit to be quarantined. If we, by this designation, they don't have to be quarantined now because they're, they're critical workers if we approve this. And by being critical worker, they take on additional requirements of mask and, which they do not have now?
Yes, they do have.
And PPE, gloves, and?
Correct. Sometimes, though, I don't think they stay six feet apart within, for like a 15-minute period, so we hope that that will take care of that.
Okay.
The kitchens are pretty tight.
Yeah.
So it allows them to, even though they may have been exposed to someone that was positive, they can mask up, or they can do all the PPE and stay there and continue their job? Okay.
All right, Ms. Moore?
Thank you, I had the same concern, Roseanne, about the food, that was the first thought that came to my mind, and was about to contact Sandy and say, what is? So, but I started looking, and I, I think the best I can tell from reputable sources is that the current thinking is that food is not really a conduit for spreading, that it's mostly airborne. So it, it made me feel better about this designation because that was my first concern as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Suddles, you have another question?
No, I move for approval.
Mr. Suddles moves for approval, have a second?
Mr. Chairman, a second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Smith.
I'm sorry, sir. Oh. My computer's all wack and shit.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, sir. I got seven budget amendments slash transfers for y'all to approve tonight. I'd be glad to go over each one if you, if y'all would like. And then as part of one of the amendments, we're asking for approval of a contract with a website vendor that'll reduce our website cost.
Any question, Ms. Moore?
I just wanted to say thank you for the explanation line, I found that really helpful when looking through.
Oh, the cover sheet thing, the?
Well, on each one, you had an explanation with a little bit about what this is, that was really helpful.
Because a lot of times, you know, when you just see numbers, they just kind of run together on an account line or something.
Yeah, I don't know the difference between, you know, cabling and equipment necessarily, what that changes, so that was helpful, thank you.
It was.
Mr. Ballard?
Mr. Smith, the, regarding the explanations, again, thank you, but that brings more questions, doesn't it? When I read it, I have a question because it says reimbursement, the first one, page one, says we're able to request reimbursement for textbooks under the CARES Act grant. Are being able to require or make the request, does that mean we expect to get reimbursement?
No, so we've already, the budget was passed last year by the board, and then the CARES Act was subsequently, you know, came about. So we've already received money for textbooks that were in this year's budget that we're currently in. So we got a textbooks and curriculum of about $600,000 reimbursed through the CARES Act for some curriculum. So we're able to use that money to cover things like in this right here for additional hotspots to go towards the, we have to pay for the service for those hotspots as well. So that, that's why we're able to use that money out of the textbook line item because we were, we've already received the money and purchased the textbooks prior to this.
Okay, I understand that now. So what, we get the reimbursement from CARES Act, but we don't buy textbooks, we buy, we move it from one bucket to the other?
Correct.
Okay.
Have a motion to approve the budget transfers?
So moved.
Everybody. Ms. Barton made the motion, well, Ms. Richardson, must say the second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none, thank you. Okay, reports and information?
Mr. Marlin?
Good evening, Board.
Evening.
I have a new PTR form for you to, to look at tonight to see if it fits your needs. The, it's actually a two-pager, and on the first page, that's labeled at the top, PTR for 2020, 2021, end of the third enrollment period, this sheet gives you the pupil teacher ratio. And, and the former sheet had that, but it had lots of other information, and I decided to sort of simplify this so that in this sheet, that's all we're looking at, is the pupil teacher ratio. So you can see at the, there's two segments, one green, that's the K through three grade level, and the blue segment is the four through sixth grade. At the bottom, you'll see that the regular education PTR for kindergarten through third grade is 18.35 pupils per teacher. Fourth grade through sixth grade is 19.96, and overall for the district, it's 18.92. So you can see we're in good shape as far as our pupil teacher ratio. This does give you the information that some board members asked for in the last meeting regarding this, lets you know on a grade level basis that all classrooms are, meet those requirements. So that's the reasoning behind this sheet, you can see, it's a lot more detailed information as far as by grade level and by school. But do you have any questions about that or anything that I can help you with regarding that particular page? Then we'll go to the next one.
Mr. Ballard?
Mr. Marlin, how do we, pardon me if we've already explained this before, but how do we count the distance learners in the ratio?
They're included as a part of.
They're just straight out included, and so it's.
So in some instances, some teachers teach only distance learners, and there are a few hybrid situations where a teacher will have distance learner plus students in front of him or her. And so they're included as a part of that pupil teacher ratio for that teacher, whatever situation they're, they're learning in.
So we're still maintaining, even in distance learning, we're maintaining the ratio that we don't, we don't exceed that ratio and have more pupils than, than are required for the teacher?
That's right.
Okay, good, all right, thank you.
So then the second page, if there's no further questions about that, the second page has to do, deal with enrollment. And so it's broken down, we actually use those totals for K6. In that first column, you'll see by each school, K through six general education totals, and then what we've added there are the other groups, including preschool, the preschool special education classes, the preschool peers that are in those, the CDC classrooms, which are the special education most involved classrooms, the behavior classrooms, that's the best classrooms, the DEF Ed classrooms, and so you'll see totals for each school. And I just felt this was an easier way for us to look at those, that information sort of separated, instead of having a three-ring circus, we've got separate rings now, so we're, we're breaking it down so that you can see the information separately. The numbers on the right-hand side show our growth, or lack of growth. At the end of 2019 and '20, we had 9,258 students. Our numbers in the green column down below show that we have 8,947, and that's a total of 311 students less than we had last year. In the previous report for the second period, we, that number was 377, so you can see we have about 66 more students during this enrollment period, and so the numbers actually are going up. For the average attendance percentage, we have 94.6 for this reporting period, the last reporting period was 95%. So that's still pretty good as far as keeping our numbers up. I am preparing some more information for you that I'll have next month regarding those in the last, our last discussion about this sheet, we talked about those indicators of regarding chronic absenteeism. So we'll look at that and give you some information about that as we are able to pull those numbers together for you.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
Very good, good explanation. Any questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Marlin.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Suddles?
Information, did we, did we approve the final site proposal and budget transfer? I remembered him giving the.
Yeah, y'all may need, sorry, I was going to mention that when I, I needed to vote twice because they were two separate items on there.
Okay, because I thought we skipped ahead, and I was wondering why you left off, I thought you should just stay.
Approval of the, that's when my computer went.
Yeah, we, the reason I broke those out separate was just because one had a contract with it.
Oh, that's fine.
Is the reason I, we put those on there separate for you. I didn't want to try to, you know, something, sometimes when you combine too many things, some things will get lost in the weeds there, so.
Is that, you got it?
So then you need to approve, approve this contract for final site for our new website.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the contract?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Suddles, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Goff, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
And then for the revenue expenditure report for October, I've kind of included, you know, it's still kind of early, you know, we're not even halfway through the year as far as for October's numbers, but I've kind of included a cover sheet for y'all this time that just, y'all to ask some questions related to COVID and stuff, kind of how we're doing. So I've kind of hit some of the very high points, like I said, we're not even halfway through the year as far as budget numbers on this report. But, you know, you can see, we've saved some money on some spots, and we have some reduced revenues in spots, you know, all related towards, towards COVID.
Mr. Suddles?
The business tax increase is due to deadline extension due to COVID, so it's, it looks like an increase, but in reality, it's kind of not.
In reality, we had a little bit of a decrease in last budget year, like in the May and June area, or April, May and June, and then, so we've had a little more this year. So it will be an increase to this year's budget, however, we had a decrease in last year's budget, so it will help us this year.
Okay. We've already taken that hit?
Yes, last year, correct, correct. This would have been an increase due really in July and August area, we had, we had some real good increases in business tax, and we took that hit last year and were able to weather that in last year's budget.
All right, we have a motion to approve the expenditure revenue report?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson, have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Suddles, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none, thank you.
The next is the personnel report. Three certified individuals have left us since our last, last month, and we're going to hire student teachers who will graduate, or who have graduated into those spots. And I think we're going to have a couple, two or three more openings that you'll see in the January report, and we have enough student teachers to take care of those openings. Any questions?
Nope.
All right, next on the agenda is school closure criteria. With everything going on with the pandemic, coronavirus, school systems all around us, sometimes go virtual, sometimes they haven't even opened at all, and stayed all virtual and tried to go traditional. And many people ask, so what's the criteria? When do you close a school? And a lot of it is like, when do we close a school for inclement weather? Last Tuesday morning, I stayed up to 10:30, which is very unusual for me, to watch the news to see which school districts have already closed for the following day, Tuesday. And I got, I woke up at 3 o'clock, got out on the road by 4 o'clock. The maintenance supervisor, the transportation supervisor, and I were out on the roads checking Merce Proce schools because it snow flared the night before. And called the police department and said, what is your opinion? How are, what's the condition of the roads? And by 5 o'clock, we had a decision made to go to school that day. So a lot of that is the same criteria that we use to keep a school open during this time, to go remote, and when I say go remote, we distribute laptops when we quarantine a class to those who don't have them. We give them hotspots, internet access for those who do not have internet access for those 10 days that they're going to be quarantined. Now, it used to be 14 days, but. Now, it used to be 14 days, but they lowered it to 10 days, 10 days for an individual, 20 days for a household. So I'm gonna briefly go over this and then, of course, ask questions during this time. We feel that our schools are very safe. We've had close to 300 positive cases in our schools, and we can count on one hand, probably less than one hand, three or four cases that could have remotely possibility, all these disclaimers, they've gotten it from someone else inside our schools, three or four cases. And let me read the numbers to you. As of today at 11 o'clock, we had 108 staff test positive, 179 students test positive, so that's 287 positive cases in our schools as of 11 o'clock, and after 11 o'clock, I think, yes, sir?
That's since the beginning of school this year?
August 10th, yes, sir. And I think we had one or two more since 11 o'clock. We had 100, we've quarantined 138 classes, we've had 2,497 students quarantined, 295 staff quarantined. So in reality, you know, in comparison, we feel pretty good, not as good as I would like, of course, but people aren't getting the virus inside our schools. The virus comes inside our school, then it forces quarantine to happen. And we've taken a very proactive stance. We've got all these modifications, guidelines in place, and you go into one of our schools and you see young students wearing masks, young students staying apart, teachers, remember the mask, remember the mask, that's what they keep saying, which is great, and most, if not all, of our classrooms have mask-free zones. Students, I don't have my mask on right now because you wouldn't be able to understand me. I need to take off my mask for five minutes, I go to the corner, take off my mask, I get the mask free, and I go back to the desk and do the work, put the mask on. So a lot of these are judgment calls. We have meetings, at the beginning of the school year, we met, what are we gonna do when we quarantine a class? What are we gonna do if we have to quarantine a grade level? What are we gonna do if we have to put a school on remote learning? What are we gonna do if the situation says we've got to put the district on remote learning? So we've got all those plans in place, and we're ready to implement them if we need to. Now, I talked to Sarah Walker two or three times a day, at the least. Real funny story, I was ordering, thought I was calling the restaurant, ordering some food today, and I called Sarah Walker, gave her my order. She said, Ralph, what are you doing? I said, you're not the restaurant. But sometimes Sarah warns me, okay, we've got a cluster, we could have a cluster, which means one case could affect another case inside the building. So let me back up a little bit. The usual situation is, if a student or teacher tests positive, we immediately quarantine that class. Now, I don't make that decision. Sarah Walker makes that decision along with the health department, they're the ones who do the contact tracing. I'm not gonna argue with them about that, they quarantine the class. We distribute laptops immediately, hotspots, the teacher goes out and teaches her class, his or her class, virtually. No sub is required in that situation, which is a good thing. Now, I think we, on one or two cases, have had to quarantine a grade level. Here's a situation where it happened, sixth grade, fifth and sixth grade, we allowed to departmentalize. One sixth-grade student tested positive in a school, the classes stay still, the teachers rotate, student needed to sit closer to the, to the front, that student tested positive, all four sixth-grade teachers had to quarantine. And I think one school, a teacher worked with several students in each class that we had to quarantine two or three kindergarten classes. So if that situation happens, then Ms. Walker and the health department makes those decisions, and then we issue the laptops accordingly. Now, right now, I'm watching two or three schools, I'm nervous about two or three schools as of tonight, we have about 16 to 20 staff quarantined out. Now, that doesn't mean they're positive, that doesn't, we have a couple whose spouses are positive, and they have to quarantine because of spouse. Several of them, their children got quarantined, they need childcare, so the teacher has to stay home and provide childcare. So 16 to 20 staff, and we're on the verge, one principal, and when this happens, I communicate with that principal and Sarah on a daily or hourly basis, I say, okay, how's things going, how's things going? And they say, okay, if we have one more case, we need to close, we need to close. I say, okay. And so we're crossing our fingers and hoping to make it through Friday. But two, two schools on my radar, but if that's the situation, and back to Ms. Moore's question earlier, we really are trying to avoid issuing laptops now for the winter break. We want to do the distance learning, asynchronous learning as much as we can right now, but if we have to quarantine a school, we may have to do that for the next two or three, four days. But when you hear a school, I mean, a school having to close, a school system having to close a school, we have several schools locally that are closed, it's because they don't have enough staff. You hear that, I don't, we don't have enough staff, we don't have enough staff. In Murfreesboro City Schools, we've gotten creative. We had limited our subs to sub 16 days a month, I've taken that limit off for the next two months. We would not let our ESP work more than 29 hours, I said, okay, they can work up to 40 hours, well, more than 40 hours, we'll pay them overtime if they want to sub in our schools. Now, some of our ESP, most of our ESP staff are education majors, they want to be teachers in two to three years, so this is good experience for them. So many times, other school systems have between a 40 to 60% sub fill rate, which means they are able to only fill 40% of substitutes, so they have 60% of the subs' jobs go unfilled, and then they have to use, a lot of times they call TA's, teacher assistants, we call them EAs, education assistants, in those positions. Knock on wood, last week, we had, we've continued to hire subs, we've gone through sub training, we had a 70% to 90% sub fill rate every day last week, which, that doesn't even count, sometimes we have permanent subs that aren't listed on there, that they assign jobs after the day started, plus ESP staff don't get those jobs until after the day started. So a lot of times, a lot of schools have 100% fill rate, that's not listed on here. Yesterday, it was a 75% fill rate, today it was a 70% fill rate. So I feel very fortunate that we are experiencing that right now, I hope it lasts. EAs have, for regular EAs, we've never gotten subs for, except for this year. This year, I'm allowing it because our EAs are lunch monitors, and we need them, we've got to have them. We've tried to have gotten several church volunteers to be lunch monitors, we've hired some lunch monitors for three and a half hours, and they get a half a day sub pay. Right now, we've got 10 sub, lunch subs hired, six have started, four are still going through the background checks, the paperwork, so we're trying to get at least two per school at the end of the day. And moving the district to all remote, we made that decision yesterday to go all synchronous next week, because as yesterday was a record number of positive cases in Rutherford County. It was also, we saw starting an increase in Murfreesboro City Schools. Earlier, when I mentioned 16 to 20 teachers out, either quarantined or providing childcare for their child, that just didn't happen Monday, Tuesday, quarantined for 10 days, so that still takes place, you have to count last week's numbers as well, and sometimes the week before that. So at any time now, they can come back, but we felt that it was in the best interest of our students and our staff to go to all synchronous next week because of, we took everything in consideration, we made that decision early in the week so we could make preparations, our teachers could make preparations, and our parents could be notified, and they could have childcare, we're gonna provide ESP, six to six every day next week, gonna provide the meals, our bus drivers are gonna drive the bus, have stops along each, around each school zone. So we're gonna take care of our children, we're gonna take care of our staff next week, and we hope that January 5th, that with all, with the synchronous days and the holidays, that we can make it through January and February, and I hope that March will, will start seeing a little bit of light at the end of the tunnel. But I appreciate your support.
Mr. Barton.
You know, I've said it several times before, but again, we have to commend you, your staff, the principals, the teachers, the EAs, the MDAs, I mean, they are all pulling duties they've never had to do before and not complaining about it. And so I guess when I, when I heard a little disruption about next week, I just think it's people that couldn't be in the know to understand that we can do just about anything except run without staff. We have to have enough adults there to monitor that many children, so if somebody doesn't understand that, you know, I don't know what to tell them, but y'all are doing a great job. Sarah and the nurses are doing a great job, but I'm just telling you, I've talked to so many EAs, teachers, and they're just, they're hitting it, they're hitting it every day, and they never know what they're gonna be doing when they get there. Principals never know what's gonna happen when they walk in, who's not coming that day, who they gotta cover for, I mean, it's a zoo, and they're managing it.
Something made the staff and teachers and everybody nervous is, any class, any individual who gets quarantined next week has to be quarantined on a holiday that happens later on in that month, so that, that, they hit home with a lot of people.
Mr. Ballard.
Just wanna say that, you know, to add on to what Ms. Barton was saying, is that people need to stop and realize the safest place for their children to be right now is in school. I mean, end of, end of story, they're taken care of, they're safely treated, and so if we can get all our kids back in school, that's the safest environment they're gonna be in, because as soon as they leave the school, they're in, they're out of the bubble and they're in, you know, COVID land, and that's what most, most happens, you know, they get loaded up in grandma's car and they take off, and who knows what happens after the first stop at McDonald's and such, but anyway, not to embellish that, just say, people need to realize that everything that's being done is for the safety of their children, and you've done a great job, and I think we're gonna be facing more challenges for people to accept that. Bring your child to school, that's the safest place he can be, or she can be, and with that, I'll say, have we established a new January 5th mark line in the sand to be...
Protocol.
To get more students to sign up for traditional, we get them off of distance learning?
We're going through those signups right now, and I expected, I'll just say that I'm pleased with the numbers who are coming back for traditional learning and fewer numbers who are choosing to do distance learning.
Yeah, when we issued the invitation before, we went from, what, 45 to 75%?
Yes, we're at 80 right now.
And 80 now, and if we can get that to 90, you know, that would be great. So thank you.
Ms. Moore.
I just wanna say thank you for all you all have been doing. You're in communication with us a lot, which I appreciate, because then when big decisions are made, we have the context to know what's led up to them and what's factored in, so thank you. I have received some questions from people, and I wanted to just give you an opportunity to address those. One is about special area teachers, so they see every kid in the school, how do you treat them for quarantine?
I'm sorry, what?
How do you treat them in case of a quarantine, since they see every child in the school? So if a child is positive, how do we have special area teachers?
In some schools, in most schools, our special area teachers maintain a six-foot distance from students. And PE, they can go to the PE class, but we have art and music in the classrooms. Now, some of our classes have 22, 23 students in them, and it's hard to maintain that social distance, so if, if a class gets quarantined and that special area teacher was in that class, that special area teacher gets quarantined as well. We had one student to quarantine 46 other students, nine adults.
So it's, it's basically the way we're structuring our special area classes, is providing for more distance so they're avoiding the quarantine?
Yes.
Right. One, two more quick questions.
Yes.
So when we had our big meeting back in July, and we, we as a board approved the protocol going forward for reopening schools, we did have some guidelines in there for when to close a school, when to close the district, that sort of thing, that are different from what you just described, and so it's my understanding from hearing you explain this, is that because at that point, we were concerned that the virus would be spreading in the schools, and so classes on quarantine, numbers of students absent might indicate that the virus was spreading in the school, but that doesn't seem to be the case, so is that why we're not following what we had thought we would be following in the summer?
And those guidelines, and everything right now is fluid, we have to change it ongoing, and if there is a situation where we're having cases in the school, and even if they're not that many, but they're clustered and it's spreading inside the school, we'll close the school, we will, we will not hesitate, I will make that call. But if they're isolated, one, one case here, one case there, then we'll stay open as long as we can provide intentional instruction for the students, and we have enough staff.
Thank you. And the last question, as far as feeling confident that we aren't having widespread spread in the schools, how much of that is, of our confidence is dependent on families getting their kids tested if they go on quarantine? And if they aren't getting them tested, maybe we just don't know if it's spreading, is that, and maybe that's a question for Ms. Walker, I don't know, but that's something that, that has been brought, that people have asked me about.
Sarah, would you like? She told me not to call her up tonight.
Oh, I'm sorry. You can blame it on me, I'm sorry.
So we, along with the health department, don't recommend getting tested, like, as soon as you go on quarantine, because those tests just aren't reliable that early, you can test too early. So if, if they do go on quarantine and get tested, we recommend that they have symptoms and get tested, or wait until that five to seven-day range. We have had a few students on quarantine test positive from a class, but that's why we put them out on quarantine. So we don't, it is a spread, but it's not like an employee spread where they're here and, you know, we keep them, keep it spreading throughout, that's why we send them on quarantine. So that's the exact reason we do that.
All right, thank you.
And something to piggyback off of that, we've got 600, we ordered 640 rapid tests, we've got those in, we're going to start out testing at Salem and Mitchell Nelson, and we'll start with the faculty and staff, so that will reduce the amount of time, if you go get tested right now, you gotta wait two or three days, a lot of times. you go get tested right now, you got to wait two or three days, a lot of times, before you get the results. So that, that will, that will help us as well.
Mr. Settles?
This is a question to the, because you brought up rapid testing. And my understanding, and you can help me, nurse, you're so important now. We just, we see more of you than we ever had, which is a good thing.
I've talked to her more than I ever have.
The last time I got tested, I got a positive test for my job. I didn't believe it at all. I said, there's no way in the world I'm positive. I couldn't be. I went the same day that I got that result to the convenient care place. They did a, a test. It took a week. So that Friday, they said, no, you're good. You don't have it. Because we'd gotten a lot of false positives on my job. But we asked the question about a rapid test and the advice from that nurse was unless you're having symptoms, I do not recommend a rapid test because you may get a negative, but you may actually be positive. Is, do you understand it like that? Okay.
So when we test, when we are going to test and use the rapid, it will only be for symptomatic employees. Because the, you know, the accuracy of those tests are not 100%. There's a pretty large false positive and false negative rate. So even if we get a positive and we have a symptomatic person who is showing signs and symptoms and we get a positive, great, we can quarantine that class quicker. But if we get a negative and they're showing symptoms, we can send them off to get the, what they call PCR, which is the send out one that takes days.
Right.
So there are lots of guidelines and parameters that we are working on putting in place to do this testing so that it's not just, oh, you're negative, go back to class.
Yeah. That was my concern.
That very well could be disastrous. So we, we have lots of parameters. We're still working on it. We probably won't start now until after we come back.
My only question really to you and Ralph is when is your book coming out? Because I mean, you guys can, this, I hope somebody's gathering all the information because literally this has been a survival guide on pandemic response. And I think I can't speak highly enough of our school system for the great response and the work that's gone into it. I just can't speak highly enough. And I, I think really, somebody's going to have to compile all the stuff and say, this is how we did it. Because we're going to, it's going to happen again. It's going to happen again at some point in our history. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate your information. All right. Any other business coming before the board? Ms. Barton?
It was kind of related to that, but not really. So I didn't know whether to bring it up then. But I did receive an email from a part-time employee that was concerned about not getting paid next week because they were, they thought, they were under the impression that that would also fall under a COVID-related closing. So I thought you might address that because we have many part-time staff that I guess are not going to get paid next week if we don't work, right? So, I mean, if we don't come to school. So.
Well, the only part-time employees that possibly would not be getting paid would be part-time nutrition if they're not needed and MDAs. Other than that.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the only ones I know of.
ESP is going to get paid.
Right. But MDA, I was talking about people within the school day.
Yeah. And.
But it's not considered a COVID closure, correct?
Correct.
I mean, it doesn't fall under the same guidelines that what happened in the spring did, is what I'm trying to say.
Correct, correct.
And I think that's what maybe should be.
But if they want to work, I mean, they can notify us and maybe we can use them in ESP.
Okay.
Because we need, we need help in ESP.
Right.
Or anything else? All right. If not, we have a motion to adjourn?
A move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. We have a second? Thank you and good night.
Good night.
Thank you.